...repaving in that general vicinity of between Joliet and Plainfield Road, east and west of Willow Springs Road. But they didn't pave this little section. And I couldn't figure out why they didn't do that. And they enlightened the question from Justin Vermeer. I contacted them. I ultimately talked to the highway commissioner, Sean McDermott, from the township. Actually, I, excuse me, I contacted the township supervisor. Then I guess it was referred to the commissioner and we talked about it. And the one story short was their response was the reason they didn't pave it is because it's not their street, Longstop's. And I have to tell you, I was surprised. I had never, and I've lived in town as long as Mr. Swindell, since 1978. I never knew that was our street. And on my years of involvement with the governor and the commissions and his trustee, I never once heard 65th Street belonged in Indian Head Park. In fact, former President Jake, there was a study by Strand and Associates, and it's dated 1995, and it listed in alphabetical order all the village streets. Let me rephrase that. What purported to be all the village streets. Guess what street is not listed on that list from the engineer in 1995? 65th Street. So here we are going along through life and nobody knowing that that street is ours. And the township, I don't think they even knew themselves. I think it was looked on. And it was an easy viewpoint to maintain because of the fact that there isn't one resident in Indian Head Park that needs that section of street. What happened, and what's in the trustees' packet, is there is a petition for annexation from the people in that general area where Walgreens is and behind going to the north. And the village board in 1972 acted upon that and passed an ordinance annexing that. And the, I'm not sure of the legal process at that time, but ultimately it ended up in court where Judge McGillicuddy, I think, approved the order of annexation of that area into Indian Head Park. And the order is 72-CO-0102, indicating it happened in 1972. The relevant part of it is it has the language that has the, not the legal description as it were, as a seemingly fine house, but basically a verbal description, constituting the legal description. And the relevant part of it talks about the area, you know, north of Joliet Road, west of this, and so forth. The relevant part says, "South of the north line of 65th Street." Now if you think about it, 65th Street runs east-west, has right-of-way on both sides of that. And the right-of-way, since it parallels the roadway, has to be the south line and the north line. The annexation takes everything south from the north line, which includes what used to be pavement and is now a bunch of potholes. That came to the village. I think maybe the founding fathers back at that time probably envisioned a point in time where that whole area from Joliet to Plainfield and west of Willow Springs was going to become part of Indian Head Park at some day, but it never happened. But that's, the street is ours and we were able to locate these records and it's clearly, it's our street. So fast forward now to just before Memorial Day, and I had talked to the commissioner and the township supervisor. Anyway, here's the deal and this is why we have this resolution and a proposal to enter intergovernmental agreement with respect to that street. We thought we had street problems, now we got one more to worry about that's in really bad shape. The deal is this, because of the ambiguity as to whose street it was and the fact that township may have thought it was theirs at some point and didn't work on it, and we certainly haven't worked on it. The proposal that was made to me that we're just, we have to discuss and make a decision on tonight is this. If we acknowledge that that street is our street, the township will take care of paving that street. The catch is we have to do 50 percent. And the estimate that I was given is $30,000 to repave that street. So I said I would put it on the agenda for tonight and I did. And I also told the township people that I would recommend this. And what I'm recommending is in this fashion. If the village, meaning the board, on behalf of our residents feels that it's important for us to keep that street open and want to see it repaved, if that's where your feeling is, then I do recommend us taking them up on this deal because we're getting saved 50 percent and we get it paved. So it's, you know, it's an expense that we don't have built into the budget. But if we want to keep that street open over there, then I recommend we pass this resolution and enter into the agreement. There are two other alternatives at least that I see. One of which is that we don't do this, then another alternative is, it's our street, let's close it. We don't need it. None of our people use it. Even the people who, even the people who are in Indian Head Park, south of 65th Street, that's their backyard, but their front yard is, and the driveways enter on that route at 65th place. So we could close the street and make it a pathway or a walkway or something like that. It might cost a nominal amount. We could put barricades up similar to what was done at Indian Woods Lane here, where if fire trucks needed to get in there because the other entrance was blocked, they could barrel right through this wooden barricade and it would just be an openly area. Walkways or so forth. But then we wouldn't have to have the cost of worrying about repaving it or snow plowing it or salving it and so forth. So we either take the township deal or we can close it. Or a third one that comes to my mind is that we can decide, look, we don't need the street, but we know there's people in the Highlands that look to the township for, you know, their services. And, you know, I could ask, and I'm not doing that at this point, but for a motion from the board to direct the village through myself and Frank, perhaps, and Brian, to contact the township, but basically to tell them, look, here's what we decided. We can't afford even the 15,000 because we're not going to spend it, if we had it, on a street that nobody in our town uses. But we know there's other people in the unincorporated area, especially the house right there at the northwest corner, 65th Street and Willow Springs Road. They front to, what is that, Laurel, I think, there? They would come out, and picture, you're that person, and you go to work on the express where the toll road. You come out, you go right 65th Street, just a little couple hundred feet, you make a turn, you're onto Willow Springs, Joliet, you're on the highway. Now you have to go two blocks north to get over to Willow Springs and come back. So we just added a half mile to their commute, if that bothers people. But that is, that is an alternative. We go back to the township and say, look, we're either, we might enter into an agreement with township whereby you maintain the street, we'll acknowledge it's ours, but you maintain it. Maybe we can drop salt on it occasionally or plow it if we'd be, I'd be willing to do that if they want to keep the street open. But we tell them, if not, then we're going to close it. Fourth one that was proposed to me that I ruled out without checking further on it is to deannex the street, except in light of, if you've read the newspapers or on TV, Cook County President Tony Preckwinkle is trying to eliminate unincorporated areas in Cook County. So the likelihood, and this is my own unscientific conclusion, of the county wanting to, because if we deannex the street, it's not going to the township, it's going back to the county. And it would become unincorporated, and they don't want to do that. So I eliminated that fourth option. So anyway, that's the proposal, and I would like to know from the trustees.
Mr. Mayor, could I please speak, shed some light on this?
One sec, one second, please, just one second. So we're at that point where I want to get the input, I will recognize.
I'm Andrew R, 21 Stoneheart Square. You said that Indian Head Park doesn't use it. Well, what was the point of the new sidewalk? Especially Acacia residents, kids on bicycles, adults who want to go over to Dominic's or to go to Walgreens. They risk their lives right now to walk down that street. I know, I'm walking every day with my dog, and the potholes, it's horrible. So you can't, you can't use that sidewalk. I mean, we could have, we could have an injury. Someone could really break away. It's so bad.
And I may have misspoke or may have misunderstood. I was talking in terms of context of repaving and keeping it open. Yes, if anybody misunderstood it, I said no being in Indian Head.
That's how I thought you meant it.
Nobody uses it. It's not needed for people in our town to drive upon because I'm unaware of any access directly to that street by a resident in terms of a vehicle. People do walk, as you point out, which is what.
Walk or ride bicycles.
Okay, walk or ride bicycles. And we could make it into a pathway if we closed it as a street to particular traffic.
Would we have to do any repairs in order to make it into a pathway? Would there have to be any type of initial resurfacing or something from a safety standpoint that we'd have to incur costs on?
I would think we would have to do so based on my construction.
And you're right, one of mine. Ed, do you know approximately how much it would cost to get some type of skin coat on in order to fill the potholes?
It's in pretty bad shape. Really need to reconstruct. We're going to keep it as a road.
I'm not talking as a road, I'm talking purely as a pathway.
You're going to have to take off the asphalt and either pour a brand-new concrete pathway or tape a five-foot wide gap.
Can it be used as a pathway now? People to walk on it?
Yes.
My question is, obviously we all want to encourage people to walk on something and not have a dangerous condition. I just want to know whether or not, is this, the immediate measures we have to take to make it into a better pathway, that could be reasonable, a lot of dollars, whatever it is, rather than encouraging $15,000 in costs? Is that something?
I mean, I'd have to really double-check it. I haven't been down there, but I know what Ann's talking about because that's the way we walked to Black Hawk Park, you know, from where we lived, my wife and my child. But, you know, something needs to be done. I can look at it and let you know. Because I can't tell you right now what it means.
I believe about 100 feet from where that turns, there is a mulch path connected in Ashbrook. Is that right?
Me and your Acacia.
Sorry. So there is a mulch path that's 20 feet or whatever.
Quite, it encourages people to.
To get over to that road.
That street, go to the brand-new sidewalk.
So as part of that, and you mentioned your path, or your path to go to the park, and you go over a mulch section. So I'm in favor of not redoing it because I think I would be hard-pressed to look a resident in the eye and say, well, we didn't do the street that you live on because we did this street that nobody lives on and there's no business on. I have a question about how much did all this, how many hours did we take to get to this?
How many hours did we take?
Yeah. Is this two hours of legal work or?
Twenty.
Legal work? Yeah.
Oh, I got the contract from the Lyons Township Highway Department, Dexter Engineering Company. Today at 2:30, I looked most of the afternoon on it, but I did do some married work, I believe, Tuesday when Mayor Andrews called me. So there's probably four hours of work. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments about trustees?
Has this become a question of whether or not we want to spend $15,000 to go ahead and have the street paved, or at this point right now, take a chance on spending a little money to close the street and then put a pathway there? It's acceptable to the people. We don't have to.
Yeah, the resolution would be to enter the intergovernmental agreement in order to get it repaved and keep it open to cars. And the cost is half the cost or not to exceed $15,000. And then the township, their paving contractor, they would be over there contracting, have this work to it, and then pay that, our total exposure to that part of the structure is just maybe 40 percent of $15,000.
So we're going to have to spend a million on it either way we go, right?
Eventually, if we keep it open to traffic for cars, yeah, we would have to pay it. And obviously, we'd have to pay the whole freight down the line. And if we were to close the street, there would be some cost incurred to close. But, you know, I don't know how much putting up a barricade would cost and putting, whether it's a mulch path or something else down.
You'd have to dig up the street. You could not let anyone continue to walk. It's the worst street in the whole area. It's unbelievable.
There certainly would be a cost, you know. We're stuck with a street we, you know, we didn't know we had for quite some time. And we're dropped out of the radar screen. I can't tell you, or me, or the time, so. But it comes to light and I'm sitting here and now we have to deal with that street. So it needs something, and I don't want, you know, and just like you, I don't want our residents to get hurt walking, driving, riding a bike. But I know that we don't need it for vehicles, so I'm looking for input from the trustees. This is the proposal. We could sort, if we just sit here and do nothing and see what happens, that's an alternative too. But maybe that's, we needed, we needed to get back to them with some input on their proposal of having their contractor repave it, that would cost us $15,000. And that's what I wanted, I want to get to on this, or direction. Let's deal with that.
So who's going to maintain the street for the, I guess?
I don't know, but I guess it's apparently nobody.
As far as?
You know what, I last fall, I don't, Ed may be able to answer on the snowplowing, but I can tell you this, I did, when this started last year, I, when I talked to the township, they got out there and did some cold patch, which obviously is temporary, but they did it. And that was when we were still really having a question because what they told me, the reason they did pave it the summer before, because it was our street, I asked them to show me what it was based on. Quite frankly, what they sent was not something that I found conclusive. So we started looking and we found the documents that Ed had packed it, and it made it clear.
And so the reason why I'm asking is because since they've really been using the townships a few years, can we just put a position in practically?
I don't think I'm going to help it right away.
So then if we decide to close the street down, which I think was not the most kind of thing before, Indian Head Park, because we don't use it, can we talk the township into a bit of being, dig up the DAS log and putting in laws, et cetera?
Certainly could have.
Is it a launch issue for them as well? Yes, would that?
That's exactly, I was going to say, I think we're all in agreement that it does make sense to spend the money to repair that road or roadway. But we probably need to make some type of repairs to it from a walkway standpoint. We can get the township, assuming it costs $8,000 to do that, maybe the township would pay for half of that, and we could reduce our expenditures by a large percentage in terms of a walking path. Because if we don't do that now, and we assume it as a walking path and we close it down, the problem I have is three years from now, we may have to repair it anyhow, we may have to pay 100 percent of it. So it'd be nice to take advantage of the township's offer. That's my thoughts first.
I just want to be clear, I like Sean McDermott, I think he's a good guy, I think it's a good offer, I just don't think it's something that we need to be doing. I like the walking path, minimal money to make that happen.
Mayor, could I just add one thing? There's a problem with utility trucks. That they come in and they, they have constantly parked their cars, you know, on, half on the street and half on the grass, and they, and especially after a rain, they cause all these ruts and mud and everything else. And I'm just thinking of a lovely path, and then you've got utility trucks coming in.
And then certainly highlight what's potentially another problem is, is I don't know if we close it to vehicles, what impact that's going to have on the utility services over there. You know, but that would be something we have to, we would have to deal with if we close it to vehicle traffic. And my hearing of the trustees, my sense is that nobody's in favor of taking, spending our $15,000 of our money, even though the township is willing to give us the other 15, and do the work to pave the street that we don't need for vehicles. But it's a good suggestion to call, you know, to contact them and see if they'd be willing to, rather than, you know, they're going to save $15,000 as well, they wouldn't have to pay for their half. So, you know, if we got a couple thousand, you know, let's say, I'm making a number up, if we got $5,000 from them and we spent a few thousand of our own money, you know, we may be able to close the street and tear up the Black Top and put some type of walking path in for that money.
Maybe the cold patch would hold if it didn't have vehicles going over.
That might be.
I would rather, if we even contemplate spending $15,000, I'd rather spend eight to make it a half, and seven on an engineer to study the rest of the streets in the village. Because nobody, our residents don't drive on that street. And if we pave it, all we're going to do is we're going to be stuck paving again. And the only reason it's going to fall apart isn't because Ann's walking down the street with her dog, it's because all the residents of Highlands are driving their trucks and cars and everything down there and hurting it. And we don't even have access to it from our streets. So I mean, I would be in favor with everybody else in terms of not.
Why don't we sell it to them?
To the highest bidder.
Right.
Any other questions or comments about spending the $15,000 to repave the street in an intergovernmental agreement?
Sharon Allison from Peacock. Do you have to give them a decision about this tomorrow or within the next month? My question for asking that rhetorically is, why don't you gather the rest of, I'm a firm believer, first of all, in you can't make a decision without having all the facts. And it seems to me like you don't have all your facts here right now, due to the, due to all the good questions that have come up in this discussion. So if you go to them and say, this doesn't appear to be the right thing, let's have some additional facts, then bring it back here, you might find, well, okay, maybe it's best if we spend the $15,000, but with the other plan, the other facts that we've gathered up here, we don't need to do that. So I mean, I think you need to gather some more facts and then bring it before we.
What, in order to follow through on the discussion I had with the township officials and to get the response to them that they had asked for, and I said, you know what, I can't make that decision, you know, elaborately when it was presented. I said, I need to put it on the agenda. I will put it on the June 13th Village Board meeting agenda. And can I get back to you regarding their proposal, right after that, could they wait that long? And they said, yes. So without them saying, oh, yeah, we need to know by date specific, there's an implied understanding that we would at least make a decision on this part of it, of spending the $15,000 tonight, so that I could get back to them. Now, in terms of any and everything else that we could possibly do with negotiations with the township, you know, there's no timeline on that. You know, but we would, you know, I could raise it as soon as I get back to them with our response. In order to, I guess, in order for us to officially make a decision on this, and I will remind people that, you know, this is strictly with regard to the spending $15,000 to repave the street maintained as vehicle traffic. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Indian Head Park and the township of Lyons Road District for repaving the 65th Street within the village of Indian Head Park. Anybody care, wants to make that motion?
Are you asking us to make a motion to approve it?
Yeah, I'm asking for a motion to approve it. A motion that.
I will not make that motion to approve it.
Okay, and if I have nothing, if I have nothing to call a vote on, then the motion will fail. Okay, then, my sense is that there's no one willing to move to approve this, so the, that item, the resolution fails for lack of, this lack of motion. And I would notify the township. Okay. They're all done with streets. The next item is a review of the 2013-2014 fiscal year proposed budget. So, but let me start off and just do a couple of quick highlights. And we can entertain, I want, I will talk about the budget, I will ask some people to make some input regarding the budget, and then we'll have the trustees ask their questions and their comments. The proposed 2013 to 2014 budget anticipates or budgets revenues, I'm talking about revenues for our total corporate fund, which includes things like real estate taxes, utility taxes, franchise revenue, state shared revenues, partly meaning our share of the income tax, license and permits, fines, charges for services. Proposed budget revenue corporate fund is $2,407,365. The draft budget was online against the. Water and sewer fund, operating revenues and other income is proposed at $1,296,150. And then there's additional specific revenues, such as motor fuel tax fund revenue, E911, special parks fund, that's the money to pay for the membership at C-STAR. Public works facility fund, capital improvement fund. There's various numbers listed there. The total revenue is anticipated or budgeted at this time is $4,024,806. The expenditures in the corporate fund for things including administration, public works, police, buildings and grounds, building department, planning and zoning, fire and police commission, the village board, and general accounts is $2,403,438. Water and sewer fund expenditures, $1,366,829. And then expenditures from the various funds where we're getting the specific revenues, motor fuel tax, E911, special parks, totals out to $4,114,937. Initially in that first blush, that leaves us with a deficit of $90,131. However, and this is a good however, a portion of that deficit is attributable to the Cochise Water Main Project, wherein we actually received a portion of that money in the last fiscal year, which is where it was pounded for. That's $71,250. So we got the money last year, it goes into last year's revenue, the expenditure comes into this year, that's why this big deficit. But if you, but we have that money in the bank, okay, so to speak. The net deficit is actually $18,881. I also know that the C-STAR contribution rate I mentioned before is going down by $3,500. So in my mind, we're actually now down to about $15,000 budget deficit. The, on the expense side, we have not decided what, if any, pay raises we have to village employees, so that's not included here. We have not reflected the pay raise to our full-time police officers that were required to pay pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement. So in general, that's where we are. I'm going to ask for two different requests, so I'm going to go with this. I'm gonna ask for two different, uh, requests, so I'm gonna go with this. We'll start with terms of discussion. I'm gonna ask trustee Bailey if you would talk to us about the public works department in order to be pleased after that, trustee Walsh.
Sure, let me get, get to it here. The only things I had, and I just got a couple of questions on this that I'm sure Ed or Dave can probably answer them for me. I'm, I just took over this, some public works, so I'm fairly new at this. And most of the numbers appear to be the same, just a couple of different ones. And I was just trying to figure out why the numbers were a little off or a little different. And, uh, you know, one of them was, was a line item on the expenditures for public works for, uh, vehicles and equipment maintenance. And it looks like in two thousand twelve and thirteen, we had estimated budget estimated eighteen thousand dollars. And this year it goes down to ten. Is that because of their newer vehicles don't need as much maintenance or? I, I was trying to figure out why it went almost down to that.
Yeah, we brought it down also based on unaudited, um, past fiscal year numbers. We budgeted eighteen last year. Again, I leave that estimated blank until the audit, first audit adjustment made. The auditors are here this week and next week. I should have numbers and we should have dropped it to draft audit usually in August. But that number, even though we budgeted eighteen, we spent far less than eighteen this past year. We did replace a vehicle, um, you know, uh, we were maintaining a, for years, we were maintaining a bad hole that would hold. We have frequent repairs. We have a four or five-year-old one now that doesn't need those repairs. Those type of things is what we're, what we're looking at in terms of. I try to keep based on what we're looking at, again, unaudited, but I, and I don't have a number. I wouldn't have picked ten thousand had we spent fourteen last year. I think it was somewhere around seven or eight thousand that we spent last year. That could just be a good year where the equipment we have didn't decide to break this year. But that coupled with the fact that we have to equip new, a new vehicle is why I brought it down to that for this year.
Yep, yep. Another one I had, and I just, and I just don't know where the number comes from. I know it was budgeted the same as last year, is for landscape and leaf removal, we have twenty-five hundred dollars. I mean, I know we don't have a leaf program, but you know what that's for, uh, disposing of the yard waste?
That's our yard, right. It's our, the wider ways stuff.
Okay, grass and stuff we go all the way. And there's a, there's a, I know there's a thousand dollars for uniforms that I think it's five hundred dollars per, per individual or something. Do we have, I mean, do we, hey, we don't have uniforms for our.
We have jeans and work shirts and safety shoes.
And then I know there's a, on the second page, there's a, uh, there's a, there's an upper office equipment, there's a thousand dollars proposals. I, I'm sure there's things we need. I just was curious. I know that there's, it's not delineated in your.
Yeah, and I don't have a space in there. I believe that was for, uh, replacement computer that we have in there. And I will add that to the description for the title, but.
Okay, those were the questions I had just on what I had seen here. Yes, or on the second page.
I'm just saying, wouldn't that go on an IT budget for computer?
Well, we don't have IT line items. I, I mean, computers usually go under office equipment on the capital outlay across all departments. We could rename it if you like.
Well, I just, you know, I, maybe we'll finish this up because there's another similar situation with communications. We spread this across multiple budget categories and it's a similar category, like for instance, communication. So, when we're done with the public works, we can talk about that, but it's appropriate.
Those are the questions I had regarding the specifics on the budget for public works.
Trustee Walsh, um, please.
I mean, do we, we want to discuss public works and are trustees any questions about that this time and then move out of a different category?
If we do that, trustees.
While we're talking about.
Okay, just talk about public works and I'll open questions, comments from the trustees. And we're gonna do this, and I, I should say this, um, until, until we set what, if any compensation increases we're gonna do with the employees, we're not gonna have a final, we're not gonna have a vote on a final budget and a vote on that budget tonight. And so, I'm going to call for a special board meeting to handle completion of the budget work for two weeks from tonight, so that we can spend time tonight to go over the questions and comments from the trustees. And then we'll have more time to entertain from the audience the next time. But I encourage you to stay here to hear these questions. You do have to go to an executive session so that we can discuss conversation with employees. So, um, it, it, it's gonna be a long night. We're not gonna finish it. But we'll reconvene for that purpose on Thursday, um, assuming the twenty-seventh at seven-thirty for finalizing the budget. If I wait, and I should, I meant to say this at the beginning as well. The way of background, the budget is not something that we're required to pass, but the village has traditionally, former president Jacob, has used. It's a, it's an effective tool for us to kind of map out a plan for how we're gonna get through the year. And we also use it to, to, as a basis for our appropriations ordinance, which is something that has to be, has to be passed. And we have to do it at the July meeting. We have to have that ordinance published for, at least online for ten days prior to board meeting. So, I'm gonna get the budget done this month so we can have appropriations ordinance at least online and take care of the items like your public works revenues or expenditures. And public works is the topic, trust me. So, if you have, if you have some questions, comments about it, suggestions, that's.
I had a question about, um, in two different areas, but this is related to public works. The overtime has jumped up to sixteen thousand dollars from eleven, twelve, seven, seven, nine hundred. Seems like specifically overall, we had a lot of overtime when you look at the percentages that we're running over. I understand there's some opinions about that because we don't have a physical, a full-time position, but yet we have a ton of part-time people. So, in this particular situation, you know, in my mind, overtime is used in emergencies. It's, it's, um, in, in situations where we have an emergency, where we respond to something that's unplanned, unplanned. We don't need to over dive, so we can't help it, especially where an upstairs is in the way. So, it has to be approved. Um, my opinion is this needs to be approved by the village administrator, not a department manager. And then it's only, it's an exception, not a rule. And I wanna make sure that in both this situation with our overtime, you know, that we're handling our overtime in that way and that it's only being used in those, in those ways. So, is there, we, do you have that variance?
Um, my biggest guess right now is that we budget sixteen, about sixteen thousand a year. Twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, um, we came close to that because we had a, well, emergencies unplanned for things. Every time it snows, it doesn't snow between eight and four.
No, I understand, but we can use the authorities. I mean, there's other ways to mitigate overtime and.
I understand, but you're asking where these, what these differences were. Twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, we had the ground hot day closer. Twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, we had a very, very mild winter. That would be my guess without, you know, without giving time sheet by time sheet, what, what the fifty percent decrease that year was. Was we went from a very, very snowy year to a very, very mild year.
Because we had a discussion about snow removal. The other thing too is, you know, any snow removal company that we use during the year, that needs to be, that needs to be bid out before the snow season. So, we shouldn't be doing any ad hoc freelance labor when we do help snow, snow help out. We need to prepare for that upfront with the suppliers so we know what our costs are going to be. And I, I don't know if that's being done.
We haven't, no, we don't, we haven't done that.
You know, you don't go out and, and get snow removal when it's snowing. You get it before it's snowing so you get the best rate. And then we, then we contract for a certain number of labor hours that we actually use the outside vendor. And then we know what our costs are going to be.
I think trustee, what, what you're asking is do, you know, something, okay, of course. But right now, we don't have like a contract whether the company's saying, hey, if we need you. I think this is what you're asking. How much do you charge us an hour? How much per truck or driver, that type of thing? If we have to call you, we have that set of costs.
Right.
That we don't have, but it's certainly something we could start with. Uh, your answer to overtime, overtime isn't a guarantee, right? I mean, overtime only comes, if it hasn't come in a lot, most of it is with the snow plowing or if there's a water main break and, and our public works department fixes it, uh, that's how. Most of the time I am called, you know, to say, hey, you're out here, you know, fix it. With the snow removal, other than not having that type of a contract, Ed would call and say, you know, what we have done in the past, and we certainly couldn't change that, is I would get a call first. Can I hire a company because we're expecting this much? So, it's not something like, Ed just picks up the phone and say, hey, you guys. So, there is a little control, but not, not as specific as you mentioned. And certainly something we can look at now before the snow season arrives.
Yeah, I'm assuming help out is early coming during the year? We got help out this year.
Yep, once and alone.
Depending what falls, you know, what's predicted, yes. But it's something we can certainly look at even for this year. It's not a difficult thing, right, and, right, and we're easy to get ahold of a couple of companies. You know, come give us a, quote unquote, daily reviews to come out and have you return an hour, if that's a couple words in length for us to do.
Sure. Trustee, you said you had another question?
Yeah, and the other, well, I had a question about, again, spread expense. So, we, one example of this would be in communications. We have a budget line item in communications. So, we have six thousand, sixty-five hundred in public works, six thousand in police, general accounts, communications of twenty-four and water of five. So, our total communications expense across the village, according to my math, here is forty-one, five. We understand the police radios, the public works radio, probably a range of different expenses in there. Maybe cell phones for public are used, you know, used across the village. So, what we're saying is, we understand there's separate silo budgets, but we need to look at some of these line items. For instance, Ryan brought up office supplies, same thing. Look at the monthly April expenses, a lot of office supplies. So, again, I'm not saying this is a huge amount of money, but if you see month that per month, it's adding up. And we need to control that as a village asset just as we would anything else. So, it's just something, communications of forty-one, five, I don't know if that's good or bad or what, you know. What I'm saying is, is that I think we have to start parsing this down a little bit to seeing what needs to be in here and what maybe can be integrated or eliminated.
Yeah, I believe it's been, I've been here since nineteen ninety-nine and the design of the budget, the line items were replaced well before I got here. And take for instance, our eighteen T though. It's about two thousand dollars a month, including long distance, including the DSL for the public works building. But it's already been broken up by, you know, there's non-emergency police numbers.
No, I understand that the expense can be delineated for each budget, but that's not what I'm questioning. I'm questioning, are we managing the expense with our vendors to get the best deal for forty-one, five? That we're not purchasing these as silo service bundles so we can get a better deal, like V O I P. Have we ever, you know, have we ever gone out for bid on the village phone system? And put that with public works? Have we looked at our cellular phones? Have we bugged that up? You know, these are all forty-one, five. That's, you know, that's a big chunk of money just for communications. So, that again, we gotta look at it by department. We also have to look at it as holistically. So, we can understand maybe that there's something we can do. Audit's the same thing. Audit is again a cost that is the same way if you don't look at each line item. We've got thirty-one, six in audit, twenty-one in general accounts, and then a separate audit of ninety-eight hundred in water and sewer. So, our, you know, audit in Western Springs ran about twenty-seven for the whole village. So, I'm not saying those are bad expenses. I'm saying, are we using professional services the best way we can? Are we getting the audit company to give us the best rate? So, that's, I'm just, you know, those are two examples that I pulled out of the book.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, looking at overtime, um, I think as a village as a whole, we have a lot of overtime. And this line item of the works, that's where we started, does not seem that, uh, big. But in this time, um, as a citizen here, I've heard that we've cut to the bone for many years. I think if we could get creative, uh, I have talked to a contract driver for snow plow service in Western Springs. And he said that what they do is they start their work at five in the morning and they run an eight-hour day and then they go home. So, they're not paying overtime. The guys come in and work early and then obviously leave early. I think we have excellent snow plow, uh, removal services. As I drive around, compare our village to other villages, I think we have fantastic snow plows, salt, all that. But I don't know if we can afford that. So, in these times, when it is very tough, um, I think that when we look to the community, as we talked about earlier with the roads, if we're gonna ask for an increase, I think we have to look within and see where we can cut. So, even a ten percent cut in overtime would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, um, go ahead.
Uh, I'd love to see, uh, I don't know if landscape leaf removal, uh, near the middle of the page, if that's where the leaf pickup went in. I know Ed said that that is for our, uh, roadways or whatever it's called. But I'd love to be able to get landscape leaf removal put back in the budget. Is this the line item where it would go?
That would have been where we paid to get all the leaves we hauled from the entire village. We have to pay somebody to haul away and take away. So, that would be about twenty thousand more, um, but that's also not the entire cost of the leaf growth. It was about twenty before it stopped. And I don't know what it would be now because it's been a few years. It might be twenty-five.
All right, so the leaf removal would be here, that the labor or equipment.
Correct. I mean, any of that, the increased fuel, none of that would be included. Only, the only thing that would be included is we pay a company to come, take all those leaves we collected and brought to the public works building and they haul them off and they take them to the land. So, that's, that's probably, I'm guessing, you know, three or four years since you said, what had been about twenty thousand a year. I'm guessing it'd probably be twenty-two.
The thing with the leaf pickup, uh, program is that's where the potential for having a lot more overtime falls because the trees don't cooperate and you have to get the equipment set up, snow plowing, uh, beginning part of December. And so, if the leaves stay up there, we're into the last week or two of November and it has to get done, then the guys are out there doing the leaf pickup program and, um, looking at cutting out the overtime, cutting that down.
We can also offer that, well, that'd be nice.
So, um, you know, my, my comment is, you know, because I heard you mention about the, uh, can we afford the great snow plowing and salting? You know, I for one think that leaf pickup affects one section of town, but snow plowing covers everybody. And I wouldn't want to do a trade-off of adding in a leaf pickup program that we can't afford at the expense of snow plowing and salting.
Well, I never said not to do it. Again, I'm the new guy here. It's fine to stay in Western Springs starts at five AM rather than having their guys come in at nine PM or ten PM or midnight. So, I don't know the right answer and I can certainly look. Uh, I'd love to know what our surrounding communities do, what other communities our size do. So, I've never said not to do it. It's just when you do it and how you do it. Again, if we are bare bones, I think there are things in the budget that we can cut. It may change how we operate, but we can cut some places.
I'm with you. I'm looking at the same money that, as far as when you do it, how, how to do it, and they do it from whatever you said, eight till five. What, what, I don't think our residents would, would appreciate is if, if we do it eight to five and it's.
Five AM.
Or five AM to, to eight?
They come in and start their day at five AM. Instead of showing up at eight AM, they come in on a.
At five, and they go till what time?
They go, I guess, to the done or a normal day, eight-hour day.
Then I'm, I'm correct. I misunderstood.
So, the theory, I think, is not many people are out at midnight or two in the morning. So, there are some people, but as I understand what Western Springs does, they start their plowing at five AM. Again, I've talked to one contractor. I'm not talking to other municipalities.
All right, I, I misunderstood what you said. But, you know, my point is still, uh, leaf pickup, snow plowing, salting, kind of go with the snow plow and salting.
Just a quick comment, just for your education when you asked about the leaves. Correct me if I'm wrong. Wasn't it getting, isn't it getting more difficult to where to take the leaves or who picks them up? Uh, before it used to be farms would just take it and that's not.
Yeah, I mean, you have to have a designated license holder pick up the leaves and take them to a designated EPA.
Got a little bit more costly. Before you would take it, am I correct? You would go to some farmer.
Yeah, there's farms in the neighborhood, you just take them there.
But not anymore.
I know, but we could put it on and type.
But just as a comment, not as more, now you got the EPA regulation, so the cost may even be more than what Dave was talking about. may even be more than what Dave was talking about.
Do we ever volunteer for bid tenant, the leaf pickup?
No. We should do it.
Maybe it might be cheaper to, to pick it up. Maybe it's something Brian and I can put on our plates.
I did have volunteers that said they would help the leaf pick up, you know, without talking, you know, I do have some names, I'm getting the point of getting volunteers.
That'd be great, I'm sure, so it's a good use.
Climate recovery.
On public works? I, I, this day is, I'm just going to look at this budget. You know, being that police is our largest expense, and I do want to make a statement out of that myself, is, you know, I, I do want to see this be a balanced budget. I am not going to vote for a budget unless the eighteen thousand dollars is somehow removed from the budget. I think we, we need to make sure it's balanced, and, you know, the expenditures meet the revenues. So I'm going to recommend doing my part in the police component. You know, overtime is obviously a very serious concern when it comes to police, it's a large expense. I know it's very unpredictable, because you can't predict when the police personnel are needed, but it's currently at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I would ask that that be reduced from an overnight, overtime standpoint, as far as the budgeting, and Frank, I would need you to talk about that. You and I are going to try to be twice a month to, to really review the overtime issues, to make sure we can limit that. I know we have, we're down one police officer, and we also have another police officer who has helped for a period of time, so we're going to be a little more challenging, but I would ask that that be knocked down, you know, at least by ten thousand dollars for the budget purposes. And the other item, which I would ask personally to be knocked out, would be the vehicle, the thirty thousand dollar vehicle. You know, if we can afford to put that off for another year, I think this is a good year to, you know, pull back everything we can, and if there's extra money at the end of the year, we can talk about the road program or different things. But I, I would, I would ask that that thirty thousand dollars be moved, unless you think it's a safety concern, or there's other reason why that happened here.
At this point, I would have no problem with taking that, Oliver, for a year to look at, maybe, who knows, I've already purchased, they, they're getting far a few in between, throughout time, there's already purchased two with grants for the criminal justice authority, but you do see less and less of those. And the other reason why I put it in there is when I started, cars were-